Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Santa Clara City Council. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our statement of values.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a second for the statement of values. Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
As we gather here, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with the strength, courage, and the will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and of our country. All this, we ask, so that we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember Mahan. Councilmember Hardy. Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Watanabe. Councilmember Chauha. And Mary Gilmore.
Did you have a statement to read?
I'll be reading the statement of behavioral standards. The city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be held, to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that, as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and the use of the gavel indicates that all conversations must conclude, and that everyone in attendance should come order and attention. Welcome, and thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment today? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, I just wanted to make a few welcoming remarks. So first of all, everyone, welcome to our governance session today, and it's an all-day session. And I wanted to also welcome our new council members, and I wanted to say that this is the first time in a long time that we've had an absolutely full council, all seven seats. So, welcome, welcome, everybody. So, the purpose for this meeting today is for us as a council, along with our city manager and executive staff, to spend time discussing the concept of governance, how we will govern under our new district election system, and how, overall, how we would manage our mutual expectations of this governance process. So today's session not only serves as an opportunity for us to get organized around our new roles, but to discuss in detail the values that we will bring to them as the council transitions from a citywide, citywide council members to council district to council members, and what aspect of our governance we want to maintain, and what aspects through a council district filter we will see as valuable, and that those aspects also that we want to avoid. So my aim as mayor is to help us all work together in moving things forward on behalf of our community. We need to engage in regular check-ins to see what is working and what is not working with what we have learned, so this is a very fluid process for us. What's important for us to consider as the city council is being intentional about how we govern and the matters that we govern, and today, this will be the beginning and how we start to work together to our mutual goals. So, thank you all for joining us today, and I want to hand over the microphone to the city manager to talk about what we're going to do. This is an all-day session.
We think our work will finish at 3:30, so that's the good news, but it's still all day. I want to start by just making introductions, and then I want to add a little bit of context for which our work rests today. Am I far too far? So, for the purpose of our work, we are fortunate to have Dr. John Elbandian and Jan Perkins with us today, and let me talk a little bit about them. As I introduced them to our executive team and management team, we've had two sessions already. These are the go-to people when you want to talk governance and working and supporting city councils with getting ourselves organized. John is a professor at the University of Kansas and also a former mayor. He has made many presentations to the city council throughout the state of California, including has presented for the League of California Cities, and he has recently facilitated discussions with both our management and executive staff. Jan Perkins is a former city manager and a senior partner with management partner, partners, a firm which our city has engaged in a couple of different matters over the years. Jan facilitates many city council workshops throughout the state, as well as consults on other issues. They will facilitate our discussion, but before we get there, I want to just add a little bit of context and walk you through some governance slides that will look familiar and that help you start to think through areas of goal-setting or discussion for us to work through today. So, for purposes of just starting this conversation, I wanted to share what we've done over the last year, and already acknowledge that this is a city council and a city staff that has made remarkable transformation with respect to governance. When I interviewed for the city manager position, as well as met with staff, what was very prominent were issues or concerns regarding the council members and staff's interaction, direct calls at different levels throughout the organization for sake of advancing the city's work or ensuring that council directions were being implemented. It really reflected a leadership gap or a governance gap, and upon entering the organization, we put some systems in place and some directions for which the council was supportive of, which began to flow directions and goal-setting and priorities of the council through the city manager's office. A year later, when we convened through our executive leadership team, as well as our management team, my first question for context setting with this group, with these two groups, was raise your hand if you are still receiving calls from the city council at multiple levels within the department. And I'm happy to share that not one person raised their hands. And so, when that happens, it's important to acknowledge that we have already undergone an incredible transformation of governance, and it has been supported by the city council. It has been intentional, and it has been supported by the city staff. And I just thought we should acknowledge that as we go through a couple of our slides, because this is work that requires that type of focus and also requires that type of collaboration. So, for purposes of just getting started with some common thoughts here, it is very clear that we want to serve the city council well. And as, as John presents the findings and the outcomes from the two sessions that we've already had, you will hear expressions from directly the managers at all levels in the organization, as well as the executive leadership team. Our focus on serving the entire community of Santa Clara and preparing strategically for the city's futures well-being is very, is very front and center. And staff actually brings forward some really interesting concepts for the council to consider as you deliberate on your work today. Our strategies, resource allocation, organizational systems, and service delivery models are structured with a citywide focus. That means, because you have been elected, or the majority of council has been elected from a citywide election system, and it has historically been the institution, your organization reflects that governance system. And so, our work there is something that we should pause and think through, because obviously, changes could, could result in that. We hope to end today with some principles for governing that could be placed into a resolution. So, the goal here is, much like the council did previously with value statements and conduct and missions, is that we would also have the same type of coordinated and collaborative effort through a resolution. Transformation is dynamic and takes regular check-ins to protect our values towards change and to lead with intention. This is the first of probably a series of sessions that we should have, particularly with some unknowns that are before us right now, and I'm suggesting that we try to meet every six months so that we remain intentional on this topic, and that it, we make it happen, not it happens to us. And better implementation, the result is that there will be better implementation of council manager form of government, since transferring all council requests to the city manager has been a value that the council has expressed it wants to continue it. I also want to share that the summary of this work helps improve accountability from the staff, as well as performance between the staff and the organization. So, this is where we are starting, and you have the slides in front of you. It's a bit small on the screen, so I'll check, I'll look here. And this is much like the business engagement governance chart or slide that you saw when we were at the convention center with respect to that governance model. But here we are, where the mayor and city council are elected citywide, our city organization operates and is structured, and resource for citywide service delivery. And I just want to acknowledge, on the left-hand of the screen, some differences that will surface today as we go through our conversation, where the mayor and council, you each have your own election realities, your own assumptions coming into a governance discussion, perception or experiences with governance, as well as interests. You all have your own council member interests that you want to achieve through this discussion, as well as through the outlook for governance. The unknowns are on the right-hand slide. There was a ballot initiative that passed, and it reflects and advised the community's interest on participating in an advisory vote towards the structure of council districts and discussion about it. There's the current CVRA status. Community input is required in this process that we're going through, as well as front and center resource and fiscal capacity to react and implement a new governance system. So, I put the middle between the city organization and the mayor and city council as the work where we will add better structure to. This next slide acknowledges where we're transforming to and where we're, as of on Tuesday, where we're at. And so, we now have two council members that have been elected by district. We have district boundaries, for which there are six. We have a mayor who's been elected citywide, and we have the same left-hand assumption, left-hand mayor and council election realities, assumptions, and perceptions and interests. We have the same set of unknowns, but we have the opportunity here, unlike where in the past where governance has not been intentional, we have the opportunity here to be intentional going forward. So, we're calling this the transitional slide, because clearly, something is going to happen which sets further direction on council district election system. And this is the future governance slide. Obviously, there is still some tentativeness around the council districts based on the right-hand column on of unknowns and the work to be done. There's the city organization, which also has a level of tentativeness with respect to its own transformation from citywide structures and systems to possibly having to integrate some council district interests or systems that better provide support for council members who are elected by council district. And then, here is the council district chart, just for reference so that you have in your packet. So, that really sets the table in terms of point in time where we've come from, where we're at, the issues, the unknowns, as well as acknowledging that there is a lot to consider between the mayor, city council, and the organization. And that's where our work begins, and I'll hand it off to our facilitators.
Welcome.
Great. Okay, my turn. All right. Really happy to be here with all of you. I had such a pleasure interviewing each member of the city council, so thank you for inviting John and myself to be here today. What I'd like to do is to give you just a brief overview of the day, and we will be finished by 3:15, because I understand that one council member is walking out at 3:20 because of another meeting, and Walter as well. Walter's going to stay till 5 o'clock, so.
Only 5 o'clock?
But I know that there's another meeting that is important, so we, Kathy too. Okay. So, in any event, we will make sure that we're finished, and John and I took a look at the agenda to retool things just a little bit so that we can make sure that we do end by 3:15. So, we will, we will do that. So, let me just go through. This morning, we're going to be spending the time on discussing what is high-performance governance. Santa Clara has a great reputation, well-deserved, for being a high-performance city. You have many attributes. When I interviewed council members and asked you, what are you proud of with the city of Santa Clara? You had many things that you're proud of, and those things don't happen by accident. They happen because many people have worked hard collaboratively to make them happen. So, this morning, we're going to spend some time on high-performance government, governance, and John's going to take the lead in the morning. The afternoon, we're going to spend time on how do you, as a city council, want to govern within this new, brave new world that you have of districts? And as you well know, you're not alone. Many, many other cities are transitioning to a district system, looking maybe similar, looking differently, but, but you are ahead of the game in that you are being intentional, to use Deanna's word. And I think that's, that is going to put you ahead as a city council so that you don't fall into some things that you would rather not to. So, that's great that you're doing that. So, this.
You might say that you actually, I got it.
Oh, you've got that on.
That you actually were city manager in cities that had districts.
Yes, yeah, good point. Yeah, so in terms of my, my own background, city manager of a couple of cities that were not district Fremont and Morgan Hill, those are general law at-large cities, but I did work for cities that were district. Santa Ana in Southern California, large city of about 350,000, longtime district. I was assistant city manager there, very, very familiar with, with how that works. And I actually started my career in Michigan in a city, Grand Rapids, that is, you know, fully districted. They actually call them wards, but it's the exact same thing. And, and so, I'm very, very familiar with how that works. And as a consultant, I work with cities all over the state of California, some of which have long been districted, and I can share experiences. They can work very well. They can also present some challenges. So, by, by deciding how you want to go about your governance, you will be much better off. So, I do, I do bring that to this, to this workshop today.
And where did you go to school?
I went to school, the University of Kansas.
Oh.
Oh, wow. For my master's degree, yes, in public administration. It trains people to be city managers, so. In any event. So, we, we will spend the afternoon on that, wrap up by, by 3:15. Just like to start out with a few ground rules for the day. It's certainly, it's a council meeting, but there's a reason why you're not up at the dais. We wanted to have a semi-informal session by having you here and with the staff as well, who can help with, with some of the discussion when, when appropriate, but certainly listen to each other's points of view. Seek consensus. Does not mean you're all going to agree, but certainly strive for some consensus. Assume good intent. Everybody is here. Everybody was elected to the city council to do the best that you can do for the city of Santa Clara. So, you may approach that differently. You may have different ways to get to that end, but everybody has the best in mind, so assuming good intent. And then, as we go along, speak up if we need a course correction. If, if the mayor or any council member think, oh, you know, why are we talking about this? You know, speak up. I'm open to that as the facilitator, so please do. And then, stay focused, and of course, I will help with that as well. Bike rack. Sometimes in a workshop like this, there are some things that can get us off track if we start talking about them. So, I will have another flip chart, and I can keep track of those, and those could be a topic for another day. It's just a time management tool. So, just to, I want to spend a few minutes, because all of the council members are very gracious and giving time in an interview, which was extremely important in setting the agenda for today, I want to share with you what I heard. The agenda today was very much set based on that input. So, where it says goals and objectives for today, one of the questions, as you recall, when I interviewed you, was what are your goals for the workshop? What do you want to get out of the workshop? So, this list is a, is a list of what I heard from council members, and there was a lot of consensus from all of you, as to what you wanted to do, spending a day together, which is a huge amount of time. You want clarity, consensus on how you're going to govern. You want some practical guidelines, and you'll see in another slide, that I also asked, what are some questions that you have? And there's a slide that has your questions, so we're going to go through those questions, actually. A fresh, refresher on some of the protocols, like what are you doing now that's going to not change? to not change, what might be changed? So we have, we have that as well. To recognize that we're one city, we still have council manager form of government, to know that we have some tools to be good representatives of, of your districts as well as the whole city. And then just understand what level of staff supports will be available, so we can have that conversation as well. And the assumption one, know that you're all trying to do the best for Santa Clara. And then to improve working relationships on the city council. So that's what I heard from all of you. Themes from the, the council interviews, some of this sort of relates to your goals. I just want to highlight a couple of things is that I heard from, from council members, you need to pay attention to your districts, you now have a district system, but focusing on the city as a whole. So we'll be talking about that today. And then the observation from many of you that the big issues that you're dealing with are really citywide, you know, traffic and, and development and housing, you've got a lot of citywide issues, so how to, how to kind of deal with that. A number of council members made the observation that, that you, your city is only 18 square miles and yet if you look at the neighbor, is it to the south or whatever direction that is at San Jose, it's, one of their districts is like the size of, of your whole city, so. You know, so I, I think there's some, there's some advantages to being mindful and aware of cities that are such as San Jose that have had districts for a long time. But it's also really important to not use that as the model. And some of you made that observation. You can, you can learn what to do and what not to do from, from other cities. Ethics mentioned by a number of you. A number of you mentioned, in your districts, you're going to be hearing from people, we have some problems in our districts. What are some low hanging fruit? What are some things that we can do to help people in our districts? So what does that look like? How do you do that? So that was one of the themes. Don't micromanage the districts or try to do staff's job. And then several council members mentioned that, that members of the public may be confused about the authority. So, okay, so now I have a representative in my district, so I want that representative just to make it happen. Well, you're still one of seven. So, so some, some conversation about how to educate the public about what is your authority as, as one council member. And then a number of council members said, well, maybe we should do a six month check-in. And Deanna already mentioned that as well. So those are the, the themes that I heard from council members. I'm not going to go through these right now, but I just wanted to share with you. And I have another handout that when we get to these questions this afternoon, it's a little bit bigger than the teeny tiny print that you have in front of you. But I did collect the questions that I, that I heard from you that you specifically wanted to go through today, so we will be going through those today, so. So that's the agenda. The overall objectives, just want to, at the end of the day, what we are planning to have accomplished by the end of the day, a shared understanding of what high performance governance will be for Santa Clara. Continue the success path you've been on, what is it? Consensus on governance within the new district system, what is that? How does a council want to govern? And then begin discussions with the new council on guiding principles and processes. So begin to narrow down to some specifics. So at the end of the day, that's what we are planning to accomplish. Okay? All right. So John, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Great, thank you, Jan. As Jan said, I, I'm, I'm pleased to be with here, with you, with you all today as well. I grew up in Los Angeles, actually, Hawthorne, near the airport. And all my degrees are from University of Southern California, so. You too? Yeah? What, what do you, what degree, what do you have?
Political science.
Oh, in political science? Neat, I was in international relations. But I still remember Professor Neomarkey, I remember from. So let me tell you a little bit, we moved to, moved to Kansas, moved to Kansas, that was for, 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 for the job, we're a faculty member at the University of Kansas. And we thought, never having really, well, I was in the service, so we lived in Fort Ord and lived in Georgia for a while, but, oh, I was also, lived in DC where we were, I worked for Central Intelligence for a while as well. But when we moved to Kansas, we thought, we had a child at that point, we thought, well, we'll be here for a couple of years, you know, and we'll go back home and, two years became three and three became four and it was, you know, it's quite a place. Lawrence is quite a place. It's a college town, it's 100,000, 100,000 people. It's, it's located 45 minutes west of the Kansas City metro area, which is about 2 million people now. Lawrence is 100,000. And then it's about a half hour east of the state capital, which is Topeka. So we've got a nice location. We're also, I would say, we're a freestanding city, which means we have kind of semi rural around us. And what that meant was that the city has to provide all the services. So there are no special districts, there are no regional authorities, so whatever it was, water, wastewater, solid waste, whatever, we, we did all those things. Lawrence, it, it, it elects its council members, they're all elected at large, including the ma, including the mayor. We don't have a separate election for mayor. We have five council members and they're, while I say elected at large, it's a little different than what you might be used to. We have an election every two years and three seats are up for grabs every two years. The top two vote getters get a four year term and the third place person gets a two year term. And what that means is that citizens get a chance to elect a new majority every two years, okay? But there are also two council members who still will be on the commission for two more ye, we had called ourselves a commission, two more, two more years, so that we have the continuity of that. By tradition, the, the council selects its own mayor. That's, that actually goes back to the origins of council manager government. The council elects its own mayor. By tradition, the top two vote getters in each election get a one year term as mayor. So I, I had two four year terms, I was mayor in both of those, one year in both of those terms. I've been on the library board, I've been on the Willow Domestic Violence Board, I've been on, I am now on the Watkins Historical Society Board. I just got invited to the Parks and Recreation Board and I'm also on an economic development board in Kansas City. So, oh, and I also teach, so, which is my main, my main job, right? So my, I'm going to tell you a bunch of stories later on and they come from my experience, so I wanted to share that, share that with you. Let's, let's, let's see, here's the slides, what do we do, like this, let's see what we have. My portion, I'm going to be supporting, supporting Jan in the afternoon, taking the lead in the morning. And my portion is going to be more of a workshop, kind of a setting you'll be doing, we'll be talking to each other as well as me presenting, presenting information. And this is the, let's see, oh, good, it's not LED. This is the, this is the title of the, of the workshop, and High Performing Governance. And so bridging the gap between political acceptability, administrative sustainability, or operational sustainability. So political acceptability has to do with what is it we want to accomplish, okay? Is the will there and, and do we have the support to do that? And then on the other half of that is, is what, is what we want to do operationally sustainable? See, can we do it not just once, but can we do it over time? Can we sustain it? So we're trying to connect what we want to do with what we can do. And, and there's a gap there. And the issue of good governance has to do with how effectively you bridge that gap, how effectively you make those connections, okay? There was a really good example that you've already lived through, which is those calls that were coming from council members, okay? Were coming directly to the staff, I take it, is that correct, Deanna? Directly to the staff. So see, you, you made a nice connection. It was a nice connection that you made between political will and what was operationally sustainable in the sense that you could get it done, but it wasn't very efficient. And it could have led to favoritism and issues of favoritism and so on and so forth. So the question is, you made the, you bridged the gap, but what, how effectively did you do it? Okay? What's interesting about, about this, at least part of this what's interesting is, usually we think we start with what we want to do and then we figure out, can we do it? In fact, I think if you look at your agendas over time, the exact opposite takes place, is that most of the items on your agenda will be staff driven. Staff will, I mean, I'm not saying they're totally independent of what you've done, but what they'll be is they'll, they will be items that staff brings to you and says, we need, we need your consideration of these items. And so it's not just a top down initiative. The top down is more of an accountability issue, but it's not, doesn't truly capture the dynamics between the two. So I'm going to talk about the, the, the skill, I'll say skill, the approach that it takes in order to work in that territory, to work in the gap so that you can, so that you can connect, connect the bridges. What we want to do before we do that though, is we want to share with you, just for your information, what the executive team met in October and so did the management, the management team, the executive leadership team, which consists of the department heads by and large, is that correct? And then the management team, which is supervisors and on up, is it, and that's how many? That was a lot of people, about 100. And so the executive leadership team was what, about 15 or 20 or something like that? Okay? So we thought it'd be a good idea just to share with you a little bit about what they talked about and their concerns. You can see their concerns, really, there's sort of a parallel between their concerns and your concerns, okay? And, and then to me, it's really interesting is that the way I look at you, what's happening with, with you now, you're, you're, you're living an experiment. That's it, you're living an experiment. An experiment that has been conducted in cities throughout the country over and over and over again. You know, I travel around quite a bit and rarely do I, do I meet with a city where all the council members are elected at large. So you are in this transition, but it's not like you're this outlier there, okay? And so this, this, this experiment, you got to check in and see what the results are every once in a while, what's functional, what's dysfunctional, what we have to change and so on and so forth. So you'll see, here are some of the thing, the themes from the executive leadership team. I'm not going to read these, you can, you can read them and, and just take a quick look at some of the things that they were concerned about.
Can you summarize them, because it's hard to really see the screen?
Say again?
Can you just kind of summarize what they are? The font is small and I print out and it's hard to read the screen.
Oh, okay, well.
Are they live streamed?
Well, the top, the, the top one had to do with the relationship between the council and staff when it came to, came to communication. And then we dealt with issues having to do with expectations. And we started with the expectations that leadership team members need from each, need from each other in order to be an effective, effective group. And then we transitioned to asking, Deanna, what does the city manager need from the leadership team in order for the city manager to do her job effectively? Okay? And you can see that. And then, and then we asked the leadership team members what they need from the city manager. Now, the content here is less important than the framework. The framework, which is a framework of, of asking about expectations and obligations. What is it that you expect, what, what is it that I need from you in order for me to do my job well? Okay? This is what I need from you, are you willing to provide it? Okay? What do you need from me? Am I willing to provide it? Okay? This, this, this framework, some of you will be familiar with it in, in other contexts, it is a framework that is utilized to look at virtually any relationship. So we use this often when we're talking about the relationship between the council and the staff, or the council in particular and the city manager, or the city manager and, you know, the staff, whatever. And it's called a psychological contract. A psychological contract is similar to a legal contract in that it has expectations and obligations, right? It's kind of contractual. The, the interesting thing though, and the innovative thing about the psychological contract, is that the expectations and the obligations oftentimes are unwritten. Okay? Think about your kids. I mean, think about your relationship with your kids. I mean, is every expectation that you have of your relationship within your family, is it specified? No, but it might come clear when the expectation is violated. Right? So what the, what the, what does, and also what happens is the expectations and obligations change over time. So our two new council members, they have a, they're in a learning curve. And, and what you might expect from them, okay, they may not be able to provide to you, you may have expectations based on your experience, okay? They may not be able to live up to those expectations because of their learning curve, but in order to avoid attributions of negative motives, okay, you lay it into the framework of, well, let's talk about expectations and obligations here, okay? So, so we did that. And that's part of what we can do, some of that this afternoon as well. And this is more about the executive leadership team. And you can see how these, these here really do relate to sort of the district questions that, that they had, okay? And these are in your slides and, and we can, Kendrick can provide a, you know, the origin, the original of the slides for you. And then the quarterly management team, the same thing, a big theme there was the transition of the, of the communication between council and the staff. And then you can see that their, their themes are also very important, emphasizing here, collaboration amongst themselves, to be able to make sure that they're on the, you know, that they're treating the districts similarly. And then this acknowledgement that all these changes are going to be viewed differently and we need some continual discussion of expectations and obligations. And then there's, these here are pretty specific about, about how, how they're going to deal with you guys, okay?
I feel like you're going through these slides a little too fast because I can't even read them all.
Yeah.
Very hard to read here.
Yeah, we'll get them, we'll get them for you, okay?
Well, I'm also thinking of the public who's watching this either on TV or that they may not be getting all this content.
Well, we can spend a lot of time on this if you want, but. but it's, it's gonna take away from the rest of the stuff.
Is the presentation, will it be online as well?
It will be online, and we're printing single slide per page, so that you have it. We recognize that it is hard to read up there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so here is the, here's the outline of what I'm gonna do for the rest of the morning. The first is the notion that, we talked about the gap being essential, bridging the gap is being essential, and the, the path, the path to really developing effective, effective work in the gap is twofold, two paths. The first is understanding that politics involves choices among conflicting values, and no value profile is the best, okay? That's why we do politics. And that politics and administration involve more than different behaviors. They're different ways of thinking. They're different mindsets. And so if you are able to understand the, the idea that, that politics is this, this question of, of values, and that there are no correct answers, I'll go through that a little bit. And also that staff and council, even though you're using the same words to communicate, you're actually speaking different language. And I'm gonna outline, outline that, outline that for you. The, okay, let me, let's see, what did I do? Oh, sorry. Okay, so you've, you've seen this before if you've ever seen an org chart of a council manager form of government, all right? And this is the classic. It's got the governing body, and then we have the city manager, and then we have the staff. And you can see that the arrow points downward, and that's, that's in order, that's, that's about accountability and, and hierarchy, okay? This, this form, this form was created in the early 1900s in large measure to counteract the political incursion into the administrative apparatus of local governments. It was all governments, but local governments in, in particular. And so what was happening at, at the time, I mean, you, you know about patronage and favoritism and all of that kind of stuff. And see, what, what you were trying to do also when you did this communication thing going through the city manager, you were trying to avoid the, 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 the influence of the political into the administrative. And you were trying to do it in a way that made it more responsive, but more efficient at the same time. And so you created a kind of a separation there. So it was sort of the hour, the hourglass, and that's the, that's, that's, that's the idea. Now, that, that was instituted at, at the time of the turn of the century, last century, when there was mass immigration and movement into the cities, and infrastructure development and management became absolutely crucial, okay? And, and errors and favoritism and inefficiencies really had dysfunctional consequences. And so the idea was, how can we create a form of government that protects the administrative apparatus from partisan political influence? Because, because we want these roads to be built effectively. We want the stormwater to be, to, 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 to respect watersheds. We want blah, 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 blah. This was the, this, this, in a way, this is the age of the engineer. The engineer really gets, gets, gets the real, the, the highlight at this, at the, at this point. And so, and so what we do is we create this, this separation. But the problem is, the separ, you can't get anything done unless you make a connection. You gotta have both political and administrative. You gotta have the political will, what is it we wanna do? And you gotta have, can we do it? So the question is, how do we create an environment where the staff feels comfortable? This is so important. Feels comfortable telling you what you need to know as opposed to what they think you want to hear. See, absolutely crucial. But at the same time, they have to be responsive, okay? And so that's the concept of the bridge. So let's, so I got this two-way arrow now representing flow of communication going back and forth. Now, here's another question, I'll read this one for you. If, if you have ever seen in a, a chart that looks something like this, including your own org chart, okay? You will, you will not pay attention to the length of the lines. You will not pay attention to the width of the lines. They've never been relevant. But if we're talking about bridges, length and width make a difference. I mean, think about a, a regular, a real bridge, okay? Length and width make a difference. So what if, what if the bridge is wide? And what if it's long? So let's, let's just, think about a, a bridge with a car, cars, bridge. A wide bridge. What do we know about a wide bridge in terms of cars?
Take a lot of cars?
It'll take a lot of cars. If there's a lot of cars on the bridge, what might happen? What?
Use the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. If there's a lot, if there's a lot of cars on the bridge, what, what might happen? Say again?
Bottleneck.
Bottleneck. We're gonna have to slow down. What else? Say again?
A lot of waiting.
A lot of waiting. Oh, wait.
Near the bridge.
Wait, wait. Yeah, so, so see, there's a good, see, so what's really interesting here is to think about, well, what's the foundation? See, what's, does every bridge have the same foundation? If there's a lot of cars on the bridge, there's more likelihood of accidents. Who gets to build a bridge? Does any citizen who want, can he create his own bridge? If a neighborhood association has enough oomph, can they get a bridge started? Yeah? Yeah? Okay? So what we've got here is one arrow. No, it's not one arrow. It's many arrows, many bridges. Many bridges, you are engaged in work on many bridges simultaneously, okay? Some of those bridges are longer, meaning it's gonna take a while, okay? Some are shorter, okay? Some are narrow, meaning probably not a lot of people there, but maybe some influentials, okay? Maybe the political side of the bridge is wider than the administrative side of the bridge. Meaning, we really wanna do this, but the engineer is saying, eh, no. It ain't gonna work. What do you mean? Make it work! You gotta make it, no, 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 you don't get it. It won't work, okay? So we've got a, a bridge, you know, a bridge coming down, but a very narrow bridge down here. Other cases, we could have a bridge that's wider at the bottom, okay? Wider on the administrative side, meaning we really need to get this done, but not a little, not a lot of political will, a lot of, a lot of political will to do it. The reason why this is, the, the reason why this is so important today is that the gap is growing. And this is what I'm trying to signify here by saying, councilors, this is your playground, okay? That's where you ought to be spending your time, okay? Building political will, trying to figure out what is politically, what do we need, okay? Maybe getting, going down here every once in a while, but getting information that will help you back here. Because if you are not working in the, in the political arena, meaning the arena of developing what is it we want to accomplish, and then helping to build support for that, who is? Now, what, what, you are not the sole actors, and I'm trying to convey that with community and third party. I mean, you, you know, I mean, it's very unlikely that, that you're gonna be able to do anything you wanna do without, you know, without support. Community support, however that expresses, expresses itself, whether it's corporate support or neighborhood support or whatever, okay? So, so the idea of trying to bring those things together, you see, that, that's, that's the political work. So there's a difference between, a lot of times when you, when we talk about, when we talk about council, council work, we're focusing on your responsibilities. Meaning, you're responsible for mission and vision, okay? Policy, mission, vision, all right? Unfortunately, that does not explain how you spend your time. See, i- i- if, 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 if all you did was focus on organizational mission, you'd have four meetings a year. You spend your time, see, on all of these, all, all of these, in this political, political arena, okay? Very, very, very important. All right. So the bridge is, the gap is growing. I'm, I'm not gonna go into the why the gap is growing, but it is growing. And what that means is, it exceeds, see, the hourglass. The hourglass metaphor is that the, it's starting to get wider. It's not as narrow as you, it's starting to get wider. It's why we talk now about executive leadership teams rather than management teams. When I go around the country, I don't hear people talking about the management team anymore. They talk about the leadership team. And there's a difference. See, something, it's an adaptation. It's an adaptation to the idea that bridging the gap has become more challenging. More people then are going to be involved, but what does it take? And that's, that's where we go into the notion of the first path, which is political values. Now, on this one, okay, let me get to where I am. Oh, let's do a little sidebar. Let's talk about your child, Maria. Maria's five years old, and she comes home from school one day. And, and you say to Maria, or you ask Maria, "Maria, what'd you do in school today?" Now, Maria's not yet a teenager, so she's still talking to you, okay? All right? And Maria says, "We did arithmetic. The teacher put two plus two on the board, two plus three on the board. I raised my hand and I said, 'Two plus two equals four.' And Debbie raised her hand and she said, 'Two plus two,' and, and then I said, 'Two plus three equals five.' And then Debbie raised her hand and she said, 'No, no, no. Two plus two equals five, and two plus three equals four.'" So you ask Maria, "Maria, what'd the teacher, what'd the teacher do then?" And Maria says, "The teacher had us vote on the correct answer." What's wrong with voting? I'm sorry. What's wrong with voting on what two plus two equals?
Fundamentals.
Fundamentals. What does that mean?
The facts.
The facts. What happens if I make decisions based on two plus two equals, two plus two equals five?
We are dispelling the facts.
And what will happen? Good things or bad things?
It will not be accepted.
Yeah. See, you, you don't want to build something, you don't wanna try to construct something thinking, believing, two plus two equals five. It's a fact, okay? Meaning, there is a correct answer. We do not vote on problems for which there are correct answers. We find people who have the knowledge and the skills who can bring to us the correct answers. Or maybe more than one correct answer, okay? So if voting is inappropriate on problems for which there are correct answers, when is voting appropriate?
Requires judgment and discernment.
Say it again, Teresa?
When it requires judgment, discernment, perhaps a little bit of wisdom to come up with the best answer.
So if I said to you, "You vote on problems for which there are no correct answers." Is that okay? Are there problems for which there are no correct answers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, you have to believe that. To be an effective elected official, you have to believe there are problems for which there are no correct answers, okay? Should we go out for Chinese food tonight or Mexican food? What's the correct answer?
Both. Both. Love them both. Yeah, appetizers, the main course, yeah.
Do you know what the mayor just did? The mayor just did politics.
That's why she's the mayor.
See, she did. We do politics in our houses all the time. You know, clean your room, clean your room and I'll give you five bucks, you know, you clean your room, or whatever it is nowadays, I don't know. But, you know, trading all the time and, yeah, we'll do this today, and maybe we can do this tomorrow, that kind of, you know, those kinds...
Compromise. You compromise, but you look for the balance.
Yeah.
Speak in the mic. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Say, go ahead, say it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You compromise, but you look for the balance.
Yeah. Yeah. Unless you're more powerful than the other person.
Depends on who you are.
See, the balance may be different, right? Depending on who you are. But see, this is absolutely crucial to understand that there are problems for which there are no correct answers. Because if there, if every problem had a correct answer, there would be no reason to have politics. In other words, no reason to vote. Okay, here's an example, let's, let's do a hypothetical. Let's say that, okay, let's think of, I'll do a hypothetical in my own community. In Lawrence, Kansas, we have a classic downtown. It's four blocks long. It's, was built and constructed in the mid to late 1800s. A number of the buildings are still, have... A number of the buildings are still, have same facades. Yeah, it's really cool. Loads of boutique shops. It's, it's, it's the center. It really is, along with the university, it is the identity of the community. Okay? All right, so that's the backdrop. The council has recently been struggling with issues of affordable housing. It has finally been able to come up with a compromise and develop a plan, a master plan, for affordable housing. It's a high priority for the council. But the question is, is it operationally sustainable? Meaning, is there any money there? Okay? There's no money there at this point. So it goes on the shelf, but it is a high priority and people are very frustrated. A few months later, the council learns that there is a developer who wants to redevelop a property on the outskirts of town. And he wants to redevelop it into both commercial and retail, which will increase both property tax, uh, revenue as well as sales tax. We get sales and it can generate a nice, a nice amount of, uh, sort of, a nice amount of revenue. And who are largely locally, locally owned, okay, are saying, if you rezone that property, that amount of land for that purpose, you will significantly damage the economic vitality of downtown. And when you do that, you will undermine the identity of this community. And don't forget, it's not only, it, there, there is, there is historic value here as well as issues of who we are. So now the question is, will you rezone the property? What's the correct answer?
There is no correct answer.
There is no correct answer. So what are you gonna do? You're gonna do.
You bought a, a very touch, that whole scenario that you bought up, I'm living that right now.
Oh, you are?
We're all living that right now.
Oh, okay.
Back in the day, the downtown was destroyed. And we are now working on bringing the back downtown to where it was.
Okay.
And
Wonderful.
Exactly what you're talking about. Now, how are we going to fund it? What are we going to do? What's going to happen? So we're going through a process of that right now. I also lived in a small town that, um, they built exactly what you're talking about. They rezoned an area. They put a huge mall up, destroyed the downtown. People are very upset. And now that mayor is faced with bringing back the downtown because of what you talked about.
Yeah.
Historic significance, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
But you need the funding source.
Yeah.
Where's it gonna come from? How are you gonna bring this together? So I've got a bunch of people wanting a downtown. And then I've got a developer who's building a huge thing out there that would help fund. But at the same time, they wanna be the downtown. They wanna be the new uptown. So we live in a world that is compromised.
Yeah.
And how are we going to get there?
Yeah. See, and, and see, that, in, in essence, then, see, you're in the political arena. See, and that is, that's your work. See, you can't, you can't say, oh my God, you know, so, you can. You know, say, oh my God, this, that, whatever. But that is the work. And the work is trying to come up with a solution, in my case, that will both make some inroads in the affordable housing, but won't detract significantly from the downtown. Now, the question is, what is that solution? And how do we build support around that, around that solution? Now, that skill and that knowledge does not happen overnight in council members. I mean, that's a learning curve, right? There's an important, important learning curve there. Now, let's take a look at why that issue can be so difficult, in part because it is grounded in fundamental democratic values. So you have a handout, um, somewhere. One of your, one of your packets? Yeah.
Which one, John? Because we have handouts.
This packet here. It has the, uh,
Which handout?
The, uh, political values in it. Yeah. It's, it's, it's actually this document.
Is it called Public Service Value?
Yes. That's it.
It looks like that.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay? Do you wanna just scan that? Scan it.
It's the document after the first article.
I forgot we're being streamed. So this is kind of downtime, right? So let me go through some of this. So let me go through these. So representation and, uh, participation. The idea that, uh, hang on, it's sort of, how are we going to represent citizens? Basically, you know, are we gonna represent them at large? Are we gonna represent them by district? How, that's a fundamental decision, kinds of decisions that needs to be made. In a case like this, the question is, who are we gonna listen to? Are we gonna listen to the advocates of affordable housing? Are we gonna listen to the downtown business owners? How much credence are we gonna put into the estimates that the developer? All of those questions, though, you, 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 you will listen to all of those because of the value of representation. The value of representation is so deeply ingrained in us. Okay? That you know that when you are elected for public office, that you will, people will come to you to represent them, whether it's district or at large or whatever. That is not to say that you will not have predispositions towards particular constituencies. Right? I mean, you may have been elected because, you know, you're, you're, you're an affordable housing person. You may have been elected because you're fiscally conservative. You may have been elected because you're this or that or whatever. And so even though you are a representative of the people and you listen, you are predisposed to some more than others. That's unnatural. Okay? In the case, um, so in the, in this case, uh, we're talking about, are we gonna listen, do the affordable housing advocates get a chance to talk? The downtown business owners get a chance to talk? And we listen to them. Okay? Second is the value of efficiency and professionalism. And I add professionalism in there because what I'm trying to convey here is the respect that we have for, for rational analytical thinking. Okay? It's, 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 it's the reason why we have master plans. You know, so that we can operate in an orderly, a relatively efficient, effective, effective, effective manner. The idea of the decision rule, the greatest good for the greatest number over the long haul. If you are an advocate of that decision rule, it stems from the value of efficiency. Okay? So efficiency for me is not just money. It's about rational analytical thinking, doing the greatest good for the greatest, the greatest number. It's really hard in this case to determine what would be in the greatest good for the greatest number of the long haul. And since it's so complicated, I hate to tell you this, you have to do politics. Okay? The third value is the value of social equity. And this is the value of, of, um, the idea that, uh, different groups of people should not be treated differentially when there's a negative impact, uh, especially a negative impact on their political power. Okay? So in this case, the idea of the resonance of the affordable housing initiative, um, would, so if you are an advocate of affordable housing and you represent those interests and you have a powerful moral argument based on social justice equity, uh, on your hands, then you're coming to the table with a relatively powerful argument. Okay? At least you consider it a relatively powerful argument. And then there are the issues of individual rights. And whether we're talking about property rights or we're talking about civil rights, um, we, we understand, we all understand it deeply ingrained in us, the idea of individual rights. So the person owns, if the person owns the property, okay, they have certain rights to go with the property. And that's why we have processes to go through when there's rezoning involved and so on and so forth. We have those, those properties. Now, here are some observations and then we're gonna take a little break. Here are some observations. First, you cannot have all four of these values optimally at the same time. Optimally, at the same time. It, it doesn't work. Let me give you an example. Do you believe in majority rule? Yes, you do, because you vote majority rule. Do you believe in individual rights? Who are individual rights protecting you from? From the majority? Why would you need individual rights if you were a member of the majority? If you're always a member of the majority, they're not violating your individual rights. Okay? So now the question is, what's the appropriate balance between majority rule and individual rights? What's the correct answer? There is none. There is none. Okay? Now, let me give you another example. You may be a diehard advocate of, of, of equity, right? Right? Social equity, you know, okay? All right. Now, how many of you are left-handed? One? Just one? Okay, here's what we know about Karen's life.
You're a sophomore.
We have discriminated against Karen all her life. Right?
Everything is set up for right-handers.
Like what? Can you tell us anything?
Doors.
Door.
Opening and closing.
Cups. Red wine cups.
Scissors.
Scissors. Can openers.
Watches. Lots of things are, in my mind, backwards.
Yeah. The binder, the, the binder you get?
Everything?
Yeah.
Yeah? Where the staples go?
Just writing from left to right. My hand smears things if I'm not careful.
Yeah. So we have discriminated against Karen all her life. Does anybody care? No. Not all differences, see, not all differences rise to the level, see, of a justice, of, of a, a legal, at least a legal claim, not all. Certainly, we may sympathize, okay? But we don't sympathize enough to, to change all the, okay? Yeah, 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 yeah. But you see, what you do, when you, when you're doing politics, oftentimes what you'll do is you'll make an equity argument. All right? And other people go, let's not, you know? And so, and so, but all of these, all, these four values are very, very powerful because they're so fundamental in, in our, in our society. Okay? And, um, and also, um, they, uh, they, let's see. Okay, that's good. I think, um, what we're gonna do now is we'll take a little break. We'll come back, uh, see what questions you have, comments you have. And then, um, I've got a little video to show you. And then we'll, we'll move on. There's also, after this handout in your, in your, in your packet there, there's another page, which is everyday values or everyday expressions of the values, I think, or everyday examples. So what I tried to do here, this is like one night at a council meeting when I was really bored, I started to write these out. I know you guys are totally engaged in every meeting that you have. I know, I know. I know. But, um, I let my boredom show. And, um, so what I did was I actually wrote out everyday, what I call everyday examples of how the values might get expressed so that you could see how it doesn't take this, this magnificent or this big argument, you could have something as simple as, as a, a stop sign. And it could be a reflection of, of political values. And that's why small issues can take so long to, to get done. Okay, so let's take, uh, ten minutes?
Sure, let's come back in eleven. And then you'll, uh,
Sure, let's come back in 11, and then you'll, you'll do more. Okay. Thank you.[448.18]
More than what they can do for themselves, by themselves, and what they can do for their family in an isolated, isolated sense. It's more this, this sort of common phrase, it takes a village to raise, to raise a child. So, let's assume, let's assume that we have model citizens gathered, and we ask them, why do you do what you do? Well, they think about that for a minute, then we get all kinds of, we get all kinds of responses. But there's one response that I want to focus on, and that's the response, I want to give something back to my community. Whoa, that's kind of interesting to me. And I think about it, and I go, okay, so what's the difference between someone saying, I want to give something to you, and I want to give something back to you? Yeah, the idea of wanting to give something back implies that you received something, and now you're sort of repaying the debt. So, the question is, what did these people receive from their life in this, in this, in this community that led them to believe they wanted to give, give something, give something back? So, clearly, there are things like a good job and healthcare, things like that. But what about a good education for their children? What about public safety? What about streets that get plowed when it snows? What about streets that don't have potholes so cyclists can, can ride on them? What about, what about parks and rec and, and trails and programs? And what about a public library that just sort of gathers people for different events? What about clean water? What about wastewater that doesn't dump contaminants into the, into the river? What about a stormwater system that doesn't, doesn't, doesn't flood the streets? Yeah, you know, all the things that you as public servants do contribute to this sense of the quality of a person's life. So, here's how, here's now the metaphor of the cups. In my view, everybody is walking around with a cup. This cup contains the quality of their life. When the cup is filled and the cup starts to overflow, metaphorically, that's the point where a person says, I want to give some of this back, it's valuable, okay? So, your job as public servants is to help fill people's cups. Okay, now, some observations about the cup metaphor. First is the idea, I actually think that the number of people in your community who say, I want to give something back, is a measure, it's a performance measure. It's a measure of a community's resilience. It's a, it's, it's a measure of a community's vitality. It's a measure of the, the vibrance and sort of the fabric, the fabric of a, of a community. Also, we can talk about, the more cups that are filled, the more that we can think of citizens working from a, a mental picture that can focus on aspirations. So, think about it, I mean, if a person's cup is not filled, can you actually engage them in community aspirations? I don't think so. I think the most you can expect from a person whose cup is not filled or is marginally filled is compliance, a compliance, a compliance mindset. What are their thoughts? First, no two cups are the same size. So, some, some people are walking around with a cup the size of a thimble, and all it takes is a little bit, and they're in, okay? They're ready to give something back. And you know other people that are walking around with a vat, and no matter how much, you know, how much goes in, they're not ready to give, to give anything, anything back. If community building is a goal, cups matter. And that leads to the political strategy or approach of negotiation and compromise, because you want to be careful about spilling cups. I mean, that's going to be inevitable in some decisions, but it's not something that you do quickly and without, and without thought. So, negotiation compromise is very important. The idea of us and them and winners and losers is not a concept of politics that is associated with community and community building. Okay, now, a little humorous observation from my time on the city council here in Lawrence. First, if a council is faced with a tough decision, which basically means they're going to fill some people's cups, they're going to empty other people's cups, they're not really ready to do that, they're going to delay the decision. And you know the number one way of delaying a decision? That's right, asking staff for more information. Haven't you ever been in a situation where, I know you're smiling now, you've been in a situation where the council, you, you're just looking at the council, that will they please make a decision? They've got all the information they need. But think about, think about the cups. And then, my last thought is, in a community without a genuine commitment to social justice, there actually are people who may not even have a cup. Now, to finish, what I'd like to do is I'd like to read you a poem. This poem is about the cups. And Melanie Gillies from the University of Virginia, the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Affairs. She wrote this after hearing me talk about the, about the cups. "I'm beginning to appreciate how tough it must be to be responsible for deciding public policy. What is acceptable politically while also administratively sustainable? Homegrown model citizens choose to actively express their gratitude. For their cups are overflowing to the point that they experience joy and satisfaction in giving back. Our jobs as public servants contributed to the quality of their lives and accumulated a debt they now recognize. Representation, individual rights, social equity, efficiency, the four conflicting values that underpin democracy. When no politically correct answer can be realized, the decision-making gravitates to negotiation and compromise. Recommendations based on cost and efficiency must be balanced by values and political viability. The right answer, no longer now, no longer obvious if it empties cups." Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to transition now to another exercise, getting you involved a little more. But any questions or comments on anything that we've done so far? The cups, any of the presentation materials? You guys okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if you could turn in your enlarged slide pack to slide 27. And at the top of that, that says, share perspectives. So, because one of the objectives today is to end up with a set of, of principles and, and protocols with regards to how you want to govern. We thought we would start with these questions to, to get your thoughts about, first of all, what's helped you be successful? Santa Clara is a very successful community. So, the first question is, what principles and practices have, have helped you in the city of Santa Clara, in your governance system, to be the high-performance system that you are?
We listen.
Uh-huh, so I'm going to capture them. You listen.
We listen diligently. To the community.
To the community, okay?
Do you listen to each other?
When we talk to each other.
Okay, so you listen. Okay, what else do you do that helps you be a high-performance government?
Communicate.
And you communicate with, with whom, just to help me understand? With, with each other, with staff, with the community?
All.
All the above?
Yeah, all of the above.
What else do you do?
Analyze.
I'm sorry? Yeah, analyze. So, you don't just make a decision based on what you think. You get information, and then you analyze it. Very good.
I think we work effectively with our staff.
Ah, you work effectively with staff.
Prioritize. Prioritize.
And Patricia, you had your...
Now that we are, I, I, I think communicating through the city manager has become very effective, because now the city manager makes sure that we all get the same information at the same time.
Yeah, the manager makes sure that we get all the information at the same time. And I think, Patricia, you also said that you communicate with, with the manager.
Correct. Right, right. Flow of information now going through one point, so to speak, gets us all the same information at the same time.
And Karen?
We have a process for everything.
Uh-huh, you have a process for everything. It's not random.
We've improved our transparency.
Improved our transparency, okay. Was that a conscious effort?
Yes, very much so.
You made a decision to do that, and you went about doing that. Okay. Yes, Raj?
We have to understand what our internal factors and external factors, what we control, what we do not control.
It's helpful to know what you can control and what you can not control, so you're not wasting a lot of time on those things that you can't control. But you might still be able to influence those things that you can't control, so, good. Okay, so, thinking, and we can add to this, but thinking about this list, so are these, are any of these going to change under a district system? These are pretty fundamental, these kind of practices that have caused you to be successful as, as a local government. So, if you were to put a checkmark by all of these, council members think that you would continue those. What about staff? So, I, I want to engage the staff a little bit here, too. Is there anything else that, that you would add to this of principles and practices that have helped you be successful as a high-governant, high-performing governance system?
I, I think the council has been mindful about the workload.
Uh-huh. Mindful about the workload. What about the partnership between council and staff, then? Would that, that implies to me a sense of partnership if, if the council is mindful of the workload?
I, I, I do think there's a, a strong sense of partnership. I go to John's slide. I do think the, the arrow is thick from council to city manager, and much thinner from city manager to staff. Not from an information flow, but just from, as a way to symbolize the, the strength of our processes, our systems, and our resources. So, lots of political priorities, and the support systems and resources within the organization aren't, aren't optimized or as, as strong as we need to be to, to support a stronger arrow.
Okay, so this sounds like there's something you're working on, then, to...
Yes, absolutely.
To strengthen those internal systems so that you can support the, what the council's objectives are.
Support a thicker arrow.
Thickening that arrow there. Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, there's a, there's also, and I'm not sure how much council would be aware of it, but there's a much, much improved level of cooperation and coordination between the city attorney's office and the city manager. So, those two council appointees, since, since we two have arrived, there's much, I, I have certainly much more knowledge of, of what the city council is, is doing. And I'm, I'm able to, we're, we're able to have a much better presentation at the public council meetings, because we're able to, to know what, and, and know what the, the common response will be, we're, we're on the same page. And, and I have to say, even, even with city clerk as well as...
And city clerk as well.
I have more, Jan.
Yeah, that, that kind of internal support system is one of those things that, when it's working well, the council shouldn't even have to think about it, because it's working well. And when, when that system is not as strong as it should be, then sometimes council does have to think about it and get involved. So, that's terrific, that there's been some, some internal systems that have been developed or, or strengthened. Terrific, good.
I, I appreciate the council giving me a heads-up about what's happening in the community, or helping me be more politically astute, as I'm a new city manager to this community, and understand the layers of, of cups and sizes of cups.
And there's some big ones.
It, it makes me more effective, and then in turn, I can translate that to staff so that we, we think through issues and, and multiple factors.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, when, when I interviewed members of the council, I was so impressed with how many of you are longtime Santa Clara residents. And the others of you who are not, weren't born here, are, were, have been deeply embedded through so many organizations, planning commission and different boards and commissions. And that political astuteness is so important to help staff. I mean, that partnership is, is absolutely critical. So, that's, that's a really good observation, to be, to be successful. And that goes to the different roles between the, the council and the staff, which John's going to talk about on another slide. So, that's, that's great. Walter, what about you? What's a, what's a success factor?
I think what is key to me is that we provide relevant information to the council as part of their decision-making, so that they can make a policy decisions behalf of the residents during each council meeting every month or week.
So, providing that valid information, so the council can make, be, do good analysis and, and provide, make good decisions. Good.
Perspective, looking outside before being elected, the level of competence of staff has gone...
Staff competence. And in this environment, in California, it's, it's very challenging for cities to be recruiting and retaining. There's a lot of movement amongst cities. So, having a, a good work environment that supports that staff competence is, is critical, because it, it's a partnership. The council does its, you do your job, staff. If your staff can do its job and have the staff to do it, then you can really hum, and you can really get things done. So, that's, that's a really good comment.
As someone who just had to run for election this past November, the staff competence is extremely important, because we, as elected officials, are held accountable for everything that happens in the city.
Yeah.
Regardless of the fact that we're part-time.
Right.
And maybe we don't know every issue that's going on. You know, at a, the lower levels of, of the, the managing of the city, we are still held accountable for everything that happens. So, staff competency is really, you know, way up there, because it's a reflection of, of how we're governing in the city.
Absolutely.
You know, Jan, I would also add to that point, the trust from the council to the city manager, I think, is very important, and it helps the staff as well.
I am so glad you said that. That was the biggest problem. We hired Deanna for one, for, probably that was the biggest issue. She bought clarity, she bought governance, she bought a lot of things to this council that did not exist for two past management cycles. So, that created a lot of issues in the community. It created a lot of issues from, and what Brian is also relating to, there was a disconnect within this entire city. And it was, it was hard, it was very hard. But over the last year, it has gotten so much better, because everybody knows what is going on. There's communication, there's the trust rebuilding, there's staff. I mean, the level that we get to deal with staff is great, because we can trust what they're telling us. What Walter said was, we are now getting all the information that we need to make a, you know, a really good decision before our agenda packets were just a couple of... It was not enough information to make an informed decision to the community. And just to let you know, the community thought, saw us as we just pushed the green button and say yes to everything. So, they didn't trust us either. So, there, there was, there was a lot of improvement, I would say, in that last year.
Okay, well, you have a lot of very, you have a positive foundation. That's what this says. A strong foundation, and then to, to celebrate these things. And the reason we like to ask this question is so you can acknowledge them and protect them, basically. So, then, moving on to the second question, what are community members likely to expect from the city council now that you have districts? And I know there are two of you that were specifically elected by districts, but yet you have districts, you're in kind of this transition. But in general, what do you think community members are likely to expect? Now that you have districts? Yes, Karen?
They think you have powers that you don't.
What kind of power do you think they, or do they think you have?
It's a perspective...
Microphone.
It's a perspective, they think you have powers that you don't, that, that now you can make everything the way they want it.
Okay.
In that area of the city, which is...
Very high expectations.
Not possible.
And I heard high expectations.
Yeah, we, the community, when this is, you know, like you said, we're in this kind of thing, this vortex of going at large to districts. A lot of the community members were concerned that we would be these mini mayor people.
Okay.
And that we would have, like Karen said, more control. But when we make our decisions as a council, it's for the entire city. And I think that they're not understanding that.
Yeah, so, it's, so it's a learning experience for everybody, is, is what it, what it is. But it's, so the expectations are, may, may vary possibly by district, certainly by individual. Okay.
I think there, again, after having to go through this election cycle, I think that there's some fear, that there is a loss of representation on the council now. That they used to be able to go to any member of the council that they wanted to be able to talk to, and they fear that now they only have one. And maybe the mayor is a second representative, and that no one else on the council will care for their particular neighborhood.
Okay.
And they, a lot of the comments that I got was, we don't want to be like San Jose. So, using that as a, you know, more of a negative example, that Santa Clara's always had a council that thinks citywide, and the fear is that they will no longer, we will no longer think citywide in making our decisions.
Yeah, so there's some fear about that. Raj?
So, that brings like a clarity of roles, and especially something on functional side, let's say, traffic, affordable housing. Those are to be, like, it's our duty proactively to let the community know these are citywide issues. And when even a district representative representing that district, he has to be, that those clarity of things has to be very clear, that we have to look in totality, rather even going beyond city. Some of these aspects are going beyond city, it's a regional problems. So, those clarities have, it has to be communicated to our constituents, basically. And we have to define those.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, on the other side of it, what might actually be better? Because you have districts. I mean, you have them. So, there will certainly be some challenges and identified some of them. But what might actually be better? What could be improved because of your district system?
Believe, believe that they're being better represented by a district representative, maybe if they didn't have one, a council member in their neighborhood before. Now, all the neighborhoods in the city will be, you know, represented by a particular council member.
Better communication.
Communication. Communication with the residents might be easier in a, in a smaller area?
Both from perspective of council member, as well as from the constituents.
Okay, both ways, okay? Okay.
Maybe they feel they can hold a, a council member accountable now. A particular person is now accountable, this is your district. I am your constituent in your district, so...
Yeah, Patricia, and then John.
We've, we have finally achieved diversity, which was the whole purpose of the district elections. We've achieved diversity on our council. We have at least, you know, beginning to have members that reflect the true population of Santa Clara.
Yeah, which was the stated reason.
I, I get a lot of sense that a lot of people don't even know what district they're in, so that's part of a confusion, too.
I'll make a note over here, yeah. And John, go ahead.
Do you think, as, as people become more aware of the district that they are in, that there might be opportunities to, to push them to take more responsibility for what's going on within their district?
We've been told by the county registrar that the district boundaries can change, election to election, depending on the census. So, I'm not sure that the public really wants to think they're in, that, that any of us don't do anything other than, you know, represent all of Santa Clara, especially when district boundaries are fluid. You're not, and that may too be very confusing to the public going forward. If you were in District 3 last year, but now, now you're in District 4, because the boundaries change, especially the people on the borders of the boundaries.
That's interesting.
Okay, and I had brought that up to you...
Debbie and then Karen, yeah.
Oh, and, and I had brought that up to you. With the six districts, the way they are, some people, even though there was diversity, it didn't really, it impacted the people... some people, even though there was diversity, it didn't really, it impacted the people that could have ran, couldn't run because it was, you know, court ordered. So that created an issue there. But then the other sense that came from some residents was the fact that if we have these districts, were we, from a governance and ethical standpoint, were we going to start to trade votes? If you are doing something in your district, my guy wants this over here. So are we going to have a governance issue? And, you know, the perception to the community thinking that we're going to start trading votes. And that happens in that little city next to us. And, and that created the problem. So a lot of people feel maybe the at-large system wasn't working for a diversity issue. But when you go into a district issue, it makes it a little bit harder to govern so that we don't have ethics jumping in there.
Yeah.
And, and I, I express that to you because I come from, you know, a place where they had wards. And it did create a problem because it did exist. But from the beginning, we need to have a system and a process.
Yes.
So we're telling the city manager who tells staff, but how are we going to stop the influence? So if we don't have a good governance set up, we're going to have problems.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's my issue there.
Yeah, absolutely. And Karen?
I had people call me up and yell and say, why are you not on my ballot?
Oh.
Not because there's not a lot of understanding how this is going to work.
Yeah. So it's just lack of in-
No matter how much information we put out there.
Yeah. So that actually, that may suggest as part of a work program, providing some communication and information to the public, just whether it's website, newsletters, whatever you, whatever your communication vehicle is. Yeah. So, okay. So these are the kind of things that then can set the, the base for some protocols, actually. So we're going to be going through the list of the questions that you all posed to me that I have as a handout. So thank you for these. I've captured these. So I, I think now, though, we could go back to the slide on the administration and politics and finish that one up. And then we're going to wrap up here just before noon.
Okay.
So we can take a break and then we're going to get back into your questions.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Kendra. Okay, so the, the second path to the political astuteness, to working, working as a, as an asset in the bridge building process, is understanding that politics, administration are more than different activities. They're different mindsets. There's a different logic. There's a different logic to that. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I want to go through some of them because the point is that those people, they're different, there are different levels of, of, of bridge building, of political astuteness if you're in the middle. So for example, think about it, it's a linguistic metaphor. Some people might be fluent in both languages and be able to speak comfortably whether they're speaking in the administrative world or in the political world. Others may be able to understand but not communicate. Others may be able to read but not, not, not talk it. So different levels of, of competence or astuteness. And I put in this chart, what I've shown is the CIO and senior staff, they are in the gap. They have no choice. Elected officials, it's added value. Meaning if you can, if you can develop the kind of understanding of the administrative world as well as the political world and work back and forth, it's added value. It's in, it's becoming in their job description. It's not in your job description yet. Okay? So I'm going to go through some of these. Like I said, not all of them. First is, and note that I've made some extreme, these are, in a way, they are extremes. There's, there's crossovers. But for the point of being able to, to, to be able to articulate it, I've drawn them sharply. So let's start with administration at the top. The activity is problem solving. And, and one of the reasons why, one of the, the way, the way council can frustrate, if your, if your goal is to frustrate staff, don't be clear on what you want them to do. Okay? That's, that's just, it's like a guarantee. I mean, they're like, they're like a, a, a dog with a bone. Give the dog the bone and the dog's into it. But keep the bone away from the dog. And it's like, give the dog the bone. The bone is the problem. What is it you want us to do? Make a decision. And the, and the issue there is so that they can deploy their talents, their knowledge, their skills in ways that add value to the, to the enterprise. See, at the same time, you're doing the negotiation, the compromise, you're doing the cups thing, right? And so there's this tension between you need more time because you, you're being politically sensitive to the cups, whereas they're getting frustrated because they're not able to work on, they're the problem. The more astute staff understand that the delay is not a motivation delay. The delay is a cups delay, if that makes, if it makes sense. You're trying to figure out, how do we do this without, without, without damaging them. The, on the political side, we have the allocation of values. Okay, you're making choices among values, combinations of values, but also politics to some extent is a game. We use the metaphor, the game of politics. All right? Now, when I say it's a game, I don't mean like fun games. I mean, it's got its own rules. So for example, Jim Oliver was the manager in Norfolk. And he told me one time, he said, John, what, what council members don't understand is that their most important constituents are the other council members. That it takes a majority to get anything done. Okay? So that's part of the game. That's part of the rule, is understanding that you need, you're working with the other council members as you're reaching out, but it's what's happening here that's really, really important. Another, another rule, and these are rules that nobody tells you about in, I don't know if you're punished for them or not, just in reputation gets affected, for sure. You got to learn to let go of issues. So some council members that just, they're so deeply into an issue, you may be, that you keep bringing it up, keep bringing it up. And ultimately, what happens is, we don't listen to you after a while because we know what you're going to say. If I know what you're going to say, why would I listen to you? I can hear what you say, but I'm not listening to you. Okay? Another rule, you don't have to speak on every issue. I don't know what your norm is here. Where, where we, oh, I said that in Palo Alto and they go, nope, we have to speak on every issue. And I was like, well, that's why your meetings go into after midnight. You're speaking on every issue, man. Another rule, realize that respect is the key to your influence among other council members. Respect. And that respect depends on you deploying your talents in ways not only that will bring you success, but that other council members value. They want to hear what you have to say about something. That's, that's, to me, that's the, that's the articulation of respect, is I want to hear what, I want to hear what Raj has to say about this. You know, I want to hear what Kathy has to say about this. Okay? And, and last, everyone has a right to speak. Nobody has a right to be listened to. Okay? You have to earn respect to be listened to. And if you're not respected, over time, fellow council members will hear you, but they will not listen to you. Okay? Right. The players. This is a tough one. No, that's okay. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you for reminding me. The players. The players on the administrative side are experts. The mindset is the trustee mindset. Okay? So the trustee mindset is the big picture mindset. I'm looking out for the city as a whole, so on and so forth. You have double responsibilities. You are trustees of the community as a whole, but if that's all we wanted you to be, we would not elect you by district. Election by district means something. Okay? You guys got to figure out what it means. All right? I don't, because I don't know here what exactly it means. But it means something. Otherwise, it wouldn't happen. Okay? So, but you have to be the ones to decide, when am I in a trustee role? When am I in a representation role? When do I represent my district? When do I represent the city as a whole? I mean, if you always represent the city as a whole, why would anybody vote, vote for you as a district representative? Okay? So you got to, I mean, it's that, it's that dynamic. And that's why I say you're involved in this, in this experiment. Okay. The conversation. What do you know versus what do you hear? So if I say to you, what do you know about something? What, what do I expect in return? What do you know about?
If I know something, you're going to, you're going to ask, how do I know that? And what are the facts? And what, you know, is the credible information? I mean, you're going to dig into that. Yeah.
And if I say, what are you hearing about something? What do I want to know?
The buzz on the street.
Yeah. See, what are you hearing about this? It's a different, you know, it's a different mindset. And see, that's why I say, the ability to understand the other mindset, you're using the same words, but may mean, may mean some different, different things. All right. What do you know? What I want from you is data plans and reports. Now, this is obviously extreme, but data plans and reports. Your passion, your commitment, I'm talking about staff, your passion and commitment is value-added. Okay? Passion and commitment do not substitute for the ability to generate data plans and reports, the analytics. If we can't do the, the analytics are the basics. Okay? The analytics for you, to me, are not the basics. They do the analytics. Okay? All right. This gets so complicated potentially. The, for example, like, when you get a report, okay, it's a sort of a, let's say you get a 20-page, 20-page report. Is that possible? You could get a 20-page report? Yeah?
They supply us with a lot of information.
All right. When I get a 20-page report, here is what I want as a council member. I want one. I want an executive summary. Okay? And I want staff to tell me, page 40, page, page four, paragraph six, page six are particularly important. Tell me what's important here. Because I don't want to go through the whole thing. Now, you may want to go through the whole thing. Okay? Good for you. I don't need to go through the whole thing. All right? What I really need to know is, what are you recommending? Okay. If we do what you want to do, what will the consequences be? What's the probability that the consequences will occur? If I needed to know the analytics, why would I need them? See, if, if they want you to duplicate, see, this is part of the logic. If they want you to duplicate their understanding, it ain't going to work. If, if you want to duplicate their understanding, it's, I mean, you could, but-
Oh, not a question. It was a comment that I think, and part of what was brought up earlier, if there is a lack of trust or there is a lack of competence-
Yes.
Then, then, then council members will feel compelled to read the entire-
Absolutely. That is a great point. That is, I'm glad you made, I'm glad. Thank you. I'm glad you made that point. I mean, that, yes. And that's why that element of trust is, is, is crucial in the effective, in the effective relationship. Passion, dreams and stories. Okay. So passion, city manager in Des Moines told me, he said, the passion is necessary because it energizes the process. And then we have the dreams that articulate the aspirations. And then we have the stories that capture the values, but in anecdotes. Okay? Now, when I say passion, dreams and stories on the political side, I don't mean that every, every one of you has to be passionate and has to tell compelling stories and have these grand aspirations. That's not necessary. I'll give you this, what my political advisor, he told me one time. He said, when I was just on, he said, John, what you got to realize is that there are times when you are going to be up on the podium and you are going to be no more than a ventriloquist dummy. Okay, so I'm a university faculty member. I'm not a ventriloquist dummy. And he said, no, 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 you don't get it. You're going to be talking to so many people and so many different groups that their issue is going to come up and you're going to open your mouth and their, their, their points of view are going to come out of your mouth. And you legitimize that. Okay? And that was a real, you know, that's kind of an eye-opener for me. I remember when I was running, one time when I was running, got a call from a parent who had kids who were swimmers. And, and the argument was, we don't have enough pool space. Okay? Especially in the wintertime. We don't have enough pool space. Kids are having to get up early in the morning, so on and so forth. Said, would you come over to our house? This was during campaign. Would you come over to our house? I'll gather some people and we can talk about this with you. So I did. And they had a nice group. We had a coffee, so on and so forth, you know? And afterward, they told me all their stuff. And afterwards, they said, would you be willing to include an advocacy of an aquatic center in your, you know, campaign? And I thought about it and I said, you know, I can't do that because I don't think, I don't think it applies, it appeals to enough people. I said, I'm certainly sympathetic to it, but I'm not going to make it a prong of my, of my program. And they said, okay, that's fine. And they worked for me. And that was very, very helpful. Two years later, two years later, we were, I was getting very frustrated on the council because our Parks and Rec, our Parks and Rec master plan had expired. And they were bringing, Parks and Rec was bringing to us stuff, you know, every couple of months, this, this. Finally, I said, I said, don't we have a Parks and Rec master plan? They said, no, it wore out, blah, blah, blah. Okay. How about we, I'm on, we're having a business meeting. Say, how about we, are there, we have five members. Are there three members who, or two others who would go along with me and to request staff develop a Parks and Rec master plan? Yeah, sure. Why not? And of course, the Parks and Rec people- And of course, the Parks and Rec people were, "Great, you know, let's do this." And then I said, "You know, in the last campaign, there were a number of people who were talking about the lack of aquatic facilities, adequate aquatic facilities. Are there another two votes that would have the council ask the staff to pay particular attention to that proposal, to that idea?" And they go, "Yeah, sure, yeah." There was nothing passionate about that. But whose passion now was unleashed in favor of the Parks and Rec master plan? Do you see? And we needed that passion because we had to go to increase taxes in order to get it done. And they worked like crazy to get it done. Yeah, okay? All right. Just a couple of more. Let's see. Let's do the power one. Power for staff is deeds, their knowledge. The currency is what have you accomplished? What can you accomplish? Currency for elected officials, for me, is your power, which is derived at our level from loyalty, from trust. And I remember one time... One time, the same guy... I went to him after about two months in office for my first time. And I said to him, "Dan..." I said, "I know that I was in favor of economic incentives for these development projects that have been coming in. But I've been thinking about this. And I know I was in favor of it during the campaign, but I'm going to start voting against them." Do you know what he said? He said, "You can't do that." So, I said, "What do you mean, 'I can't do that?'" "There's new data. I'm going to change my mind." He said, "No, you don't get it. If you change your mind now, why would anybody trust you in the future? You've only been on the council for two months. You haven't built the credibility necessary for people to acknowledge that your thought process." Now, I never would have thought of anything like that because I wasn't... You know, I'm a council member. I mean, I'm a faculty member. I've got all my own colleagues. We've been together for years. They know who I am. I could change my mind. It would be okay. But as a new council member, it's a new group of people. They don't know who I am, and so on, and so on and so forth. So, let's can finish this piece up here and say, you know, we need translators. And so, you know, it's part of your role, if you choose to accept it, is to understand that administrative world. Because, know it or not, you are wearing political lenses. And they are wearing administrative lenses. And it's... If you're doing your job well, you are wearing political lenses. If they do their job well, they're wearing administrative lenses. So, it's a matter of the connection. Okay. So... Oh, yeah. So, let's just see where we got... Yeah. Okay, so, we did that. And then this is the summary? And so, that's it. I think we're ready for lunch, aren't we? Yeah? Okay. Thank you all very much, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have lunch in the back where we usually have the food.
Okay.
So, we're going to eat 30 minutes. Right, Jen?
Yeah, so, we'd like to start right on time at 12:30. And if it turns out that everybody eats quicker than that, we'll actually start earlier, okay? All righty. Thank you. Pardon me? Yeah, that's a deal.